Well, that was beautiful. Take us back to the Great Gatsby, I think, was it? So, we can thank the TVCA Chamber Musicians. Now, when I call your name, I want you to stand up, please. Carolyn Nguyen, Joseph Campbell, and Michael May. That, I am going to call this meeting of the Temecula City Council to order. So, tonight, we have our invocation by Pastor Gary Nelson of Calvary Chapel, Temecula Valley, and flag salute, please, by Mayor Pro Tem Matt Ron. So, if you'd please stand. Hey, Gary, how are you?
Good evening, distinguished council members and staff. The city's grown so much, I don't get to see you as much. There's been quite a few months in between. I wanted to share with you just a single verse from Psalm 34, the Psalm of David. "Oh, taste and see that the Lord is good; blessed is the man who takes refuge in him." Shall we pray? Lord, thank you so much for this community, for all the good things that you have done in our midst. We thank you in advance for all the good things you're about to do. Thank you for our commitment to family and children. Lord, continue to guide us and lead us, so that we might stand above other communities in Southern California. We might be a strong tower of goodness and righteousness. And we pray in the Lord's name. Amen.
Thank you, Gary.
All right, please join me in saluting our flag. Place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. We have several presentations this evening, and the first one is wonderful. Not that they're not all wonderful.
The first one is roll.
Well, the first one is, okay. So, I wanted to get right to the presentations. Okay, Madam Clerk, could we please have the roll call?
Absolutely. Councilmember Comerchera?
Here.
Councilmember Negara is absent. Councilmember Ron?
I am here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Mayor Edwards.
I am still here. So, our first presentation will be a certificate of recognition to Paradise Chevrolet Cadillac for receiving General Motors Business Elite Mark of Excellence Dealer Award. And I'm gonna let, Mr. Terry Gilmore is here, and if he would come up, please, I'm gonna have Mayor Pro Tem Ron bring this to you. And I want to read it. "City of Temecula Certificate of Recognition Presented on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of the City of Temecula to Paradise Chevrolet Cadillac. Paradise Chevrolet Cadillac recently earned General Motors Business Elite Mark of Excellence Award for the fourth consecutive year. The Business Elite Mark of Excellence Award, one of the highest honors in the industry, is a symbol of exceptional performance in sales and customer satisfaction. Paradise Chevrolet Cadillac is one of 10 Chevrolet Business Elite dealerships to receive this award out of General Motors 4,500 dealerships across the United States. We're proud of Paradise Chevrolet Cadillac for earning this prestigious award, and we thank them for their commitment to complete customer satisfaction and for delivering high-quality automobiles and outstanding service to the community, and I would add for being a lifelong supporter of everything that is good in Temecula. Nonprofits, special events, Paradise Chevrolet and Terry have been there since the beginning. Loyal friend, wonderful neighbor, fantastic business, and we are fortunate enough to have all of those in one person here in Temecula." So, let's give him a round of applause. Four thousand five hundred dealerships.
Thank you, Mary Ann, Mayor, and City Council members and staff. To my left is my partner at the store that most people don't know, is Todd Tracy. He's been with me 15 years, and he's my partner, managing partner. This gentleman here, this little guy, we call him AJ, that's a little nickname for him, or his initials, I guess. But AJ, actually, last month, we were the number-one commercial fleet dealer in the United States. And I think when you sit here, it's hard to imagine big cities like New York, Chicago, California. And he achieved that last year. As most of you know, we're in the midst of trying to build a commercial dealership in the vacant land off the freeway. And if we can be the number-one dealership in the nation last month, which I honestly never thought was even possible, and working out of a trailer, and no one can see the 600 commercial vehicles we have in stock because we're renting parking from Abbott and their structure, I can't imagine when we put 700 vehicles on this piece of land and build a sales and service dealership that is open and directed for that commercial customer, where we're gonna be open seven days a week, they can drop their car off Friday, they can pick it up Monday morning at 5:00 if they want. We'll have commercial loaners. The sky is actually the limit. So, we're anxious. We're probably about, maybe a year and a half away from going through the entitlement process with Aaron's help. Did I say that right, Aaron?
Sure.
Aaron is such a wonderful person.
Yeah.
And Luke is for certain a wonderful guy. But the reality is, we believe that this is going to bring such recognition to Temecula, and to be number-one in the nation last month is literally, seemingly impossible.
We aren't surprised, honestly.
AJ and his team did a great job. So, thank you all for recognizing us. Half the fun anymore at my age is maybe a little bit of that recognition that didn't seem that important years ago. But today, when you have people like AJ and Todd that are working so hard to continue our legacy and to do the things that we've done in the community, it makes me proud. So, thank you for the recognition from all of you. Thank you.
Well, you're welcome, and we know that, you know, the better the business does, the more the community benefits because of your generosity.
Yeah, well.
So, thank you so much.
We're glad to help.
And Mayor Pro Tem Ron has your lovely framed certificate again.
This is incredible. You guys, did you print this today?
We spared no expense.
This is amazing. This is, especially the framing is special.
It's real paper, yeah, and there's like a ribbon on there, and I got to sign it.
You know I'm kidding, honestly. We do appreciate that, and thank you again. We'll try to do this more often.
That's truly remarkable.
It is remarkable.
Yep. Congratulations. Good for you, my friend.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Okay, we next have a presentation for National Preparedness Month, and it is a proclamation. And who is doing this?
You are.
I'm reading it. National Preparedness Month. Well, I hope everybody's prepared. You know, it got really dark yesterday, too. So, was it the eclipse? So, whoever, come on down. Don't be shy.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I knew you wouldn't come down alone.
Never alone.
Yeah.
Head men at the table.
So, did you notice how it just got kind of dark all of a sudden yesterday? You know, were you guys out in force, you know, trying to make sure that everything was okay?
Yes.
So, "City of Temecula Proclamation. National Preparedness Month. Whereas National Preparedness Month occurring each year in September creates an important opportunity for every resident of Riverside County to prepare their homes, businesses, and communities for any type of emergency, including natural disasters and potential terrorist attacks. And whereas investing in the preparedness of ourselves, our families, businesses, and communities can reduce fatalities and economic devastation in our communities and in our nation. And whereas injury and loss of life is avoidable when individuals take responsibility for preparing their families and their communities. And whereas emergency management programs such as its Riverside County Ready Campaign, Federal Emergency Management Agency's Ready Campaign, Citizen Corps, and other federal, state, local, tribal, territorial, private, and volunteer agencies are working to increase public activities in preparing for emergencies and to educate individuals on how to take action. And whereas emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every citizen of Riverside County, and all citizens are urged to make preparedness a priority and work together as a team to ensure that individuals, families, and communities are prepared for disasters and emergencies of any type. And whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA as we know it, has announced the 2017 National Preparedness Month theme of disasters don't plan ahead, you can. And whereas all citizens of Riverside County are encouraged to prepare an emergency communication plan, participate in citizen preparedness activities, and visit the county's Preparedness Campaign's website at riversidecountyready.org for important preparedness tips and information. Now, I therefore, Mary Ann Edwards, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Temecula, do hereby proclaim the month of September to be National Preparedness Month. So, we're calling on all government agencies, private organizations, and the people and businesses to develop their own emergency preparedness plan and work together toward creating a more prepared society. So, thank you very much. I know you all work very hard. So, tell us about who's here.
Well, thank you very much. I was told I had 45 minutes.
Yeah.
Whoever told you that isn't here anymore.
Yeah, not.
I'm surrounded by the Temecula Citizens Corps. I work in the fire department, that's my job, but emergency preparedness is their life. That's why they're here. They're all volunteers. It's something that I believe very strongly, and they all believe so strongly, and I incorporate my family into it. My lovely wife is here, who's joined them also, to make it a family event, so when we go out there. And since I don't have 45 minutes, I can't talk about all of them, but there is one particular person I would love to talk about, and she doesn't know it.
Surprise!
Surprise. So, coming here into this position, I inherited this group. I inherited this group, and it's been great, but there's been one person that, I mean, I wish I could recognize everybody, but one person who's been a constant factor there. And she cares for everybody. You can tell. She volunteers her time. We're on the Rainbow Fire, she calls me up, "Do you need water?" And she delivers water out in the freeway for the firefighters. She truly does care about everybody, and that's the lady to my left, Diana Serrano.
Diane?
Diana has been in the leadership position in TCC for now 12 years.
14 years, since 2003.
Well, she started, there we go.
12 years.
So, she's been a constant factor in the TCC, and probably one of those people that everybody can turn to. So, this is more, as much as I would love to bring everybody in and say this is about everybody, because we all are a team, I want to take today out to recognize Diana Serrano for her leadership and present, I believe you have something for her?
I most certainly do. So, we have a couple of things for you, actually. So, first, we have this beautiful crystal award that says, "Temecula Citizen Corps in recognition of Diane Serrano's 12 years of dedicated leadership and service to the Temecula Citizen Corps 2017." So, I'm gonna put this right here for everybody to see. We're not dropping it, hopefully. And, I know. So, I also have a certificate of recognition for you. "City of Temecula Certificate of Recognition Presented on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of the City of Temecula to Diane Serrano. The City Council is proud to present this certificate of recognition to Diane Serrano for 12 years of dedicated volunteer service to the Temecula Citizen Corps. Diane has carried out many programs and projects during her tenure with Temecula Citizen Corps, serving as the program manager, and also in several other capacities. Sounds like just about everything that anyone could want, actually. We appreciate Diane's continued dedication and service to the City of Temecula and its citizens, and warmly wish her the best in her future endeavors, and it is signed. Mary Ann Edwards, Mayor, on behalf of the entire City Council and every resident in this city who benefits by Diane's leadership and volunteer service, and all of yours, helping to keep Temecula the 13th safest city in the nation as of last week." So, Diana?
Thank you.
I know it's really fun, huh?
It is.
It's a lot of work, though.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Why, this is a surprise. Someone's in trouble.
Yeah.
I just, I want to say thank you so much to everyone for the opportunity to have been able to be part of such a very important, you know, piece of this community, to be prepared, to meet the public, and to be of service. That's something that I hold very dear in my heart. You know, to have been able to volunteer as much time, it takes effort from my family as well to allow me to put so much time into something like this. And it's always a team effort. Everything that I'm able to do, it's because of the training, the leadership, the mentorship that I have from everyone that has been able to help guide the Temecula Citizen Corps. Either it's coming from the city, or also from the fire department and the sheriff's department, and the other agencies, of course, that we've worked with. But all of these people here, they're my mentors as well. They're my teachers. They're definitely big helpers. So, I just want to say thank you so much to all of you for the opportunity.
Well, you've done a phenomenal job. 12 years goes by really quickly, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Seems like it does. So, thank you for everything you have done for the citizens of Temecula and for our community, making us one of the safest places in the nation. And don't forget, it came in a very beautiful box. You need the box, too. So, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys.
And thank you, Citizen Corps. We're very blessed, because not every city has an organization like this, and they play a critical role, you know, in keeping the city prepared and helping with our neighborhoods. And so, thank you on behalf of the City Council and all the residents that you serve, and the businesses, too. So, good for you. I think he should take you out for, you know, like a party after. Thanks a lot.
Thank you again very much. Thank you all.
All right. And we have certificates of recognition for longtime Temecula, City of Temecula staff members, and so, you know, this is one of those bittersweet things. But we want to recognize people who have really helped to build and shape this city for many, many, many years, great friends of ours. And I am going to start at the top. Yersa, where are you? Come up. I do not, I don't remember a time when Yersa was not here. I really don't. I, you know, he's just a fixture around City Hall, and he and I are usually the last ones to leave the council chambers after a meeting, and he really doesn't have to hang around. But he does hang around, because he wants to make sure that I get to my car safely. So, thank you. So, on behalf of the City of Temecula, I have for you a certificate of recognition presented on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of the City of Temecula to Yersa Kanagowski, right? "City Council is proud to present this certificate of recognition to Yersa Kanagowski, employee number 102." And what was Sean Nelson?
24.
Yeah, see, so, you're not close, but still.
But that number, his number was fixed.
Yeah, we do know. Yeah, we do know that, yes. There's a story there. So, 102 is a pretty good number.
Yeah, thank you.
For 26 years, Yersa has dedicated himself to serving the City of Temecula. During his tenure, Yersa served on the Department of Community Services and the Department of Public Works. Yersa supported and played a vital role in many successes, including managing contracts for the Department of Public Works and procurement of numerous services for one of the largest city departments, and with an annual operating budget in excess of $5 million. Yersa's attitude of service before self has made a lasting and positive impact on the City of Temecula and its employees, residents, and businesses alike. We're grateful for Yersa's many contributions to our community, and we wish him happiness and success in all his future endeavors." So, I'm gonna have Mayor Pro Tem Ron bring this down, and I know your life story, but just really quick, I mean, really like three minutes, so tell us where you...
No, no.
Where were you born? Where were you born? Where were you born, and how did you come here?
Born in Poland.
Born in Poland.
Yeah.
And educated, and educated as in engineer?
Engineer, yeah.
Right? This is gonna be like pulling teeth, I can tell.
Yeah. In 1989, we came to America, and we picked living Hemet from 1991, no, 1989 to current date.
Right, and so...
29 years.
And how did you pick Hemet, of all places, to, you know?
You set me up for this one.
He didn't! He didn't!
No, actually, you know, I just got the US map, and I dropped my finger and said, "There you go, this is Hemet."
Really?
Yeah.
And where were you at the time when you did that?
Uh, New York.
So, in New York. You came all the way to Hemet from New York.
Things happen.
See? It does. And good things happen for a reason, because you know, you know, we have been very, very good friends since we worked together in traffic, when I was on Traffic and Safety Commission, so Councilmember Comerchera.
I just want to say, and maybe my memory is a little fuzzy, so if I'm not quite accurate, correct me, but Jose is really a tremendous story, and a great American story.
Yes.
And I don't recall what year it was, but probably shortly after you started here, when you went through the process to become an American citizen.
94 or 93, one of those.
Okay. And, no, had to be later than that. Well, you know better than I do.
Don't argue with him.
But I remember, to finalize that, a group of your colleagues here and friends hired you a limousine to take, to get your, take your oath of citizenship. Is that correct?
Say no.
Did I make it up? No, it is correct. But I just wanted to bring up, that's how well you were thought of in this city, and have been for all the years. You've been here, and I know as long as I've been here, so you've been just a wonderful asset to the city, and God bless you, my friend.
Thank you.
Yeah, we love you, and he just, he has amazing stories to share, you know, about a life before coming to America, and then coming to the United States in New York, and putting a finger down on a map, and it landed on Hemet. So, we're very glad it did. So, we love you, and don't be a stranger.
No, I stopped by.
Okay, good.
You're invited.
So, you know, we would not be sitting in this building were it not, well, in this condition, in this configuration, as beautiful as it is, and perfectly constructed, were it not for a team of city employees. And that team was actually headed up by Bill McAtire for the new city hall, and he practically lived here. "Don't sit down, come up here." You don't sit down again. I just remember driving down to Old Town, and it happened to be rainy that winter, and when they were excavating for the foundation and building the garage, I remember this two-story-deep hole full of water, and Bill just standing there, you know, wringing his hand. So, this certificate of recognition is for family member, Bill McAtire, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Temecula. The City Council is proud to present this certificate of recognition to Bill McAtire, employee number 385.
I'm a new guy.
Yeah, you're up there. "For 13 years, Bill has dedicated himself to serving the City of Temecula. During his tenure, Bill served in the Department of Public Works, also where, you know, I grew up, Traffic and Safety, Public Works, yeah. Bill supported and played a vital role in many successes, including managing construction of the Temecula Public Library, Temecula Community Center, the Civic Center, and parking structure, the Old Town Community Theater, and Fire Station Number 73." Wow, my goodness. Did you put your finger, your handprints in all the concrete of the driveways of all of those buildings?
Empty.
Yes. Among many other significant construction projects. "Bill's attitude of service before self has made a lasting and positive impact on the City of Temecula and its employees, residents, and businesses alike. We're grateful for Bill's many contributions to our community, and we wish him happiness and success in all his future endeavors." Boy, what a legacy to look around the city and see all the buildings.
I'm really fortunate. I'm fortunate to have that, yes.
We're keeping you busy tonight.
I came here, my family moved here 31 years ago, from Dana Point, by way of New Jersey.
Oh, my gosh.
And when I came here, I just knew that this was a great place to raise a family. And I was fortunate enough to find a job here, and to be able to build a couple of great projects, and to work with a really good team of people, and that is, that's the legacy of the city, is the team that they have here, the people who work here, and how their heart and soul is in their jobs, and it's quite a tribute to the city, and I think that's why we are who we are.
We think it is, too, and it's obvious that you poured your heart and soul into every single one of those buildings. I can still see you pacing back and forth, and running back and forth, you know, trying to find contractors and...
My wife is trying to get me to shut my mind down. I was driving down Margarita Road today, I said, "That curb, I don't know."
You know, I don't know that that, I don't know that that ever, yeah, I don't know that that ever is gonna go away. But, you know, at least you'll get, you know, he'll be home where you can, you know, work on it every day with him and remind him, you know, and keep that honey-do list going, I'll tell ya. So, Bill, what a legacy, you know, for you.
Thank you.
And thank you, and you're such a great team player, and he's a lot of fun. To have that job, you have to have a sense of humor, and he does. So, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Ron, for presenting this certificate.
One of the benefits of retirement is I don't have to wear long pants or shoes anymore.
Oh, man! You know, Dr. Edwards is retired now, and I always knew he would make a really good squire, and indeed, he has. So, the next one is for Bruce Weddington. Bruce, come on! Another fixture. Oh, my goodness, and 20 years has gone so fast, has it not?
It has. That's right.
It has. City of Temecula, and you don't look a day older.
No, I do.
Yeah!
I do.
"City of Temecula Certificate of Recognition Presented on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of the City of Temecula to Bruce Weddington. City Council is proud to present this certificate of recognition to Bruce Weddington, employee number 232. For 20 years, Bruce has dedicated himself to serving the City of Temecula. During his tenure, Bruce served in the Department of Public Works. Bruce supported and played a vital role in many successes, including serving as superintendent of facilities, no small job, responsible for 25 city buildings totaling approximately 500,000 square feet. Bruce's ability to maintain the condition and quality of the city-owned buildings and facilities is second to none. He's been the primary contact for any issues related to city facilities and responded to many emergency calls, and I know that's true, at all times of the day and night. Bruce's attitude of service before self has made a lasting and positive impact on the City of Temecula and its employees, residents, and businesses alike. We're grateful for Bruce's many contributions to our community, and we wish him happiness and success in all his future endeavors." 20 years, 25 city buildings, 500,000 square feet. My goodness.
Thank you.
So, thank you so much. So, tell us something, like a favorite memory, or a funny memory. I know there are a lot of those.
I just, I moved here in, what, 1974, so I've seen this town just double, 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 triple in size. So, it's been, it's just been a fun place to live.
Yeah.
It's a different town every couple of years.
Actually, it is.
Yeah.
And we try to keep it fresh, you know? And you have done a remarkable job with city buildings, because, you know, we, some of our city buildings have matured, and they still function great, and they look great.
Yeah.
And it's not, not easy.
A bunch of guys underneath me, so...
Yes. And isn't it a wonderful city family?
Thank you.
That's really the key. So, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Ron, and thank you, Bruce, for 20 wonderful years. You really don't look a day older. City Temecula is so blessed to have just fantastic team and family members, I can't begin to tell you. I always tell people, gee, I wish I worked here. All right. I know. Okay, so, do we have any public comments?
We do, Madam Mayor, we have one.
Okay, so, a total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address City Council on items that appear within the consent... Okay, so, a total of thirty minutes is provided for members of the public to address City Council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the City Council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the City Council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filed with the city clerk prior to the City Council addressing that item. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Could we have the speaker, please?
The speaker is Mark Caton.
Mark Caton, I bet I know what you're gonna talk about. Or maybe I don't. How are you?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Staff, appreciate the opportunity. I'm here for the Temecula Education Foundation, and I just wanted to speak and give a, a early preview of what's coming up in October. October fourteenth, we're planning our first Temecula Touch a Truck. And if you're not familiar with Touch a Truck, Touch a Truck is where you bring a lot of vehicles together to one location and children get to touch and honk the horns and experience the trucks that they see on the roads but don't usually get the opportunity to know what they do. So, there's quite a few trucks and our new chief of police has committed to helping us with some, I don't know if she got the SWAT vehicle yet, but, uh, some vehicles from, uh, the city, uh, police force. We'll be, of course, after the fire department as well. Opportunities for, uh, public, uh, safety, Traffic and Safety Commission might be an opportunity to tie them in, and of course, we're counting on, uh, community services, and I'm already emailing Dawn to, uh, see that we could get a fleet of, uh, city vehicles out to the event, just because they'd like to see what the city vehicles do and there's, uh, but it's a great opportunity for the kids, um, and it's, you know, for kids from ages one to ninety-nine. And, uh, we just wanted to get early word out and then I'll, I'll be back, uh, three more times.
Yeah.
Uh, prior to the event and give you more details, but, um, it's, it should be a lot of fun and a great opportunity to, uh, help the kids here in town to, to see what, it'd be the first one in Temecula.
Yeah, I'd never heard of it before, but thank you, Mark.
It's quite popular, it's all over the nation doing them, so...
Well, wonderful, then we'll look forward to it and we'll see you three more times.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Okay. Okay, do we have any City Council reports? Who said yes, Stu? I don't see you, but go ahead.
Well, I'm gonna steal Zach's thunder just a little bit because I went to the Build a Boat Regatta, and I don't know if you've ever been to that event, but it is a hoot. I didn't, I didn't take part in it, but I got to watch it, and, uh, it was really a unique experience, to say the least. And I actually took a video of it with my, with my phone and then posted it on my Facebook page, and three thousand people have viewed that particular race, and it, it's just a lot of fun. And the comments is what I really enjoyed reading is, as people were watching the video and just the, the response, "Oh, what a fun event, I wanna do that next year," you know? So, Community Services does an excellent job, and if you're not there, you don't really experience it, so I encourage people to look at what is on the Community Services calendar and check it out, 'cause there is a lot of fun stuff that's happening, so, that's it.
So, he stole your thunder, Zach?
Yes.
Sorry. Okay. Oh, and Kevin, too? Okay. Well, councilmembers prerogative. Okay. Anybody else? No, no, no? Okay, then, we're gonna move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted with one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the City Council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Number two, approve the action minutes of August eighth, two thousand seventeen. Number three, approve the list of demands. Number four, adopt ordinance seventeen-dash-five amending chapter fifteen-point-zero-eight Western Riverside County Transportation Uniform Mitigation Fee Program, finding this action exempt from CEQA, second reading. Number five, approve the Second Amendment to the Consultant Services Agreement with Park Consulting Group for Technology Services. Number six, approve the sponsorship agreement with Michelle's Place for the Michelle's Place Walk of Hope at the request of Economic Development Committee Mayor Edwards and Councilmember Comacher. Number seven, approve the sponsorship agreement with Valley of the Mist Quilt Guild for the two thousand seventeen Old Town Temecula Outdoor Quilt Show at the request of Economic Development Committee Mayor Edwards and Councilmember Comacher. Number eight, approve the agreement for minor maintenance services with Renee B. Martinez, Senior DBA Renee's Commercial Management for Homeless Encampment Cleanup Services, and approve an appropriation from the General Fund Reserve. Number nine, receive and file temporary street closure for two thousand seventeen Autumn Fest events. Number ten, summarily vacate restricted access along a portion of Rancho California Road at parcel three of parcel map nineteen-five-eighty-dash-one. Number eleven, summarily vacate restricted access along a portion of Rancho California Road at parcel one of parcel map three-five-four-eight-one. And number twelve, approve the track map three-six-four-seven-nine located at the southeast corner of Nicholas Road and Villa Lobo. And I need a motion to...
Move approval.
Madam Mayor, we, we have two public speakers on item number eight.
Okay, so, I'll take a motion for the balance.
Uh, move approval on the balance.
All right, so, go ahead and cast your votes on that. Okay. No, 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 no.
She says yes.
I said yea, but it's not taking my... There, there it goes. No, it didn't take it, okay.
We'll go ahead and note for the record that...
Yes, so we have four ye, eyes and one absent, and then we will pull item number eight. Approve an agreement for minor maintenance services with Renee B. Martinez, Senior DBA Renee's Commercial Management for Homeless Encampment Cleanup Services, and approve an appropriation from the General Fund Reserve. So, do you wanna, you know, call the speakers? Do we want a brief staff report? I know, it's pretty self-explanatory.
It's up to you, Madam Mayor, if you'd like a brief staff report, I know Pat can, can provide that, or you can hear the speakers, it's your prerogative.
Yeah, I think we should just go to the speakers because it's really self-explanatory. So, you can call the first speaker, please.
The first speaker is Tammy Sims, to be followed by Martha Howard.
Hi, Ms. Sims, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
Thank you for the opportunity, for allowing me to speak. I'm here as a volunteer from the community. I've lived in this community, by the way, for over thirty years. I don't know if very many of you have been actually members of Temecula and, and part of the community, uh, but I've seen so many changes. What I'm here to talk about more than anything else is my volunteering in the community, which I've done for many years here. And what I have seen with the homeless in our area, it has changed so dramatically. My personal experience through the last many years is that we have several mothers with children who are our new homeless, and that is where I'm always trying to find somewhere for them to be able to be relocated, once they're on the streets. And it is one of the most difficult and heart-wrenching things that I come across, and we do not have housing for people in our community. And I really want you, I really wanna express that these are, we not only have mothers with children, we have families that have lost their homes. We have families who are living out of their vehicles right now because they have nowhere else to go. They're taking their children to schools, they are doing everything that they can in which to try to make it in this community, but they have nowhere to go and we have nowhere to place them. And we, in our organization, it's a not-for-profit organization, but we do allow funding to go to places in the area to help them for a temporary amount of time. With that, it is not enough. We do not have enough housing in the area. Whatever it is that you guys have as far as funding and so forth, I hope that you will think about, before you allocate it to anything else, try and put it somewhere where we can actually help find some homes and places for these, for these people in our community. They are our neighbors, they're, they're, they're part of us, we are all one big community, and I hope that you'll really think about it before you make any votes and put it in the right places.
Thank you, Ms. Sims, thank you for your volunteer service.
The final speaker is Martha Howard.
Hi, Martha, how are you?
I'm doing great. I'm back again here. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council and supporting staff. I'm Martha Howard, Adina Association founder and president, and I think, um, Tammy expressed very well our needs in the city for housing, uh, for affordable housing especially, and the need to address the homeless situation. I was very glad to see and I commend you for bringing it to the agenda. And as I was reading, I asked myself, uh, what is the likelihood of becoming homeless, any of us? And the chances are very great, uh, the working class especially. We are one pay away from defaulting on our mortgage or our rent, but that said and done, I just wanna move to item eight right away. You are proposing to allocate a hundred thousand dollars from the General Fund, Fund to clean the homeless camps, but it's not clear, are you removing the camps or you're cleaning them, maintaining them, or, uh, it is not very clear to me what it is that is gonna be done. Which leads me to say that on twenty-fifteen, funds were allocated to remove homeless camps, and here we are again, spending taxpayer money. That is unsustainable, it is. We have to find some common ground, a solution. Our city has contracts with waste management, correct? And also CRNR and...
CRNR.
CRNR? Okay. So, another question is, why do we have to contract separately if we have already those entities in place to do cleanup or remove the homeless or whatever it is that you're planning to do? So, um, the General Fund is one of the city's tax revenue accounts, and we'd like to know what portion of these hundred thousand dollars come from the housing and development, and urban development? That will be one of my questions. Also, uh, on October twenty-sixteen, uh, the Valley News ran a, published an article saying that, um, the county of Riverside received nine-point-three million for homeless housing support programs. And how much does Temecula is receiving from that amounts that come every year, are, do you apply for the grants? You know, those are questions that we have. So, with that said, um, we have some propositions that you might take in consideration. They're a mouthful, but we have to start somewhere. And so, we propose that the hundred thousand dollars, we realize addressing the lack of affordable housing by putting a moratorium. That is something that has to be done, to put a moratorium on rent increases. People is moving constantly without a place where to stay because the rent just skyrocketed.
Need you to summarize, Martha, if you could, please.
I'm sorry?
Summarize, if you could.
Okay, yeah. And just, uh, we propose that a comprehensive, uh, approach to the homelessness situation, and it's not a problem, it's a situation that we're facing, and, um, and advocacy to have a mental health team here in the community and the community health in Temecula, so, thank you.
So, I, I would like to sit down with you and have a meeting so we can talk about some of these things. So, can you make sure that we have your, a way to contact you?
Absolutely.
And then we'll set up a meeting.
And Tammy will be too, and so, we will be happy to sit with you.
Sure, that'd be great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, no further comments? Okay, um, councilmembers, anything?
Move approval of the item. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for approval. And my button does not like me this evening. Reach over here and hit this button.
Is my finger...
Nope.
Was that good enough?
Yes, that was good, it was remote. Okay, so, we have four with, uh, Councilmember Nigar absent, four eyes. All right, thank you very much.
Can I just say, I know it's after the fact that when you, when you do get together, uh, there are very definitive reasons why we have to hire an additional firm that's hazardous waste and the like, that CRNR, our, uh, trash hauler, is not qualified to handle, and so this is very specialized, uh, work, and so I'd make sure we get that explanation to you.
Yeah, and, and we'll, you know, we'll talk about all those things and bring any questions that you may have too, uh, you know, about general fund monies and, and all that. And actually, we hope to partner, um, very soon with Riverside County Flood Control. Part of the costs of this will be theirs, and so we hope to have a reimbursement, um, of those funds from Riverside County Flood Control to go in. And so, we have to remove those encampments from, um, either private property or they're on public right-of-way. Most of the time, it is environmental concerns, 'cause they're in the creek, and so it's just, you know, it's not safe, and, and it's a trespassing issue too, and safety, so, um, we can talk about all those things. So, make sure we have your contact information. All right, so, I am going to turn this meeting over to President Jeff Comacher in the Temecula Community Services District.
I thank you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to call this meeting of the Temecula Community Services District to order. Madam Clerk, why don't you go ahead and take the attendance?
Director Edwards?
Here.
Director Nigar is absent, Director Ron?
I am here.
Director Stewart?
Here.
President Comacher.
I'm here as well. Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
And we'll dispense with the reading. We have one item under, uh, consent calendar, that's item thirteen, approval of the action minutes of August eighth, two thousand seventeen.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please cast your votes. And that carries four zero with Councilmember Nigar absent. Mr. Hawkins, got anything left after Stu stole everything?
Nothing to add, Mr. President.
Thank you. Aaron, uh, anything further?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Any, uh, comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We have it.
Second.
And a second, any objection?
Nope.
We'll adjourn.
All right. So, we are moving on to reconvening of the Temecula City Council meeting, and we actually have a public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to the City Council before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city clerk at or prior to the public hearing. Number fourteen, adopt weed abatement lien resolution for fiscal year two thousand sixteen-seventeen. So, can we have a very brief staff report, please?
We do.
All right.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, every year, the city of Temecula is responsible for weed abatement for properties that are not cleared of hazardous weeds during the spring and summer abatement season. On April twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, the City Council approved an agreement with Inland Empire Property Services to bring parcels with hazardous conditions into compliance with the Temecula Municipal Code. The owners of these parcels are billed by the city to recover costs of the contractor plus an administrative fee. If the owners do not respond to the billing request, the city places a lien on the property to recover the cost of abatement. All of the owners were properly notified via certified mail, return receipt requested of the need to abate weed conditions on their properties, and were given thirty days to remove the weeds themselves prior to the city taking weed abatement action. Per the Temecula Municipal Code, section eight-point-one-six-point-zero-nine-oh, the lien process requires that a public hearing be held before the City Council to take comments from the property owners with respect to the cost proposed to be assessed against their properties and to confirm those costs. Additionally, the council must adopt a resolution for the fiscal year, which does three things. First, confirms the costs incurred by the city in performing the weed abatement work. Second, provides that the actual abatement costs will become a lien upon the properties. And third and finally, provides that the resolution will be transmitted to the Riverside County Treasurer. There are seventy-one properties with proposed liens before you tonight, and with that, staff recommends the council adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council, the City of Temecula, ordering confirmation of the special assessments against parcels of land within the city of Temecula for cost of abatement and removal of the hazardous vegetation for fiscal year two thousand sixteen-seventeen." That concludes my report, available for any questions.
All right, thank you, Luke. Any questions, councilmembers? None? None? All right, in this time, then, I would like to open the public hearing, and do we have any comments? We do not, so, public hearing is open if anyone would like to speak on this issue. The Adopt Weed Abatement Lien Resolution for Fiscal Year Two Thousand Sixteen-Seventeen going once, going twice, and we will close the public hearing and discussion or entertain a motion.
Move item fourteen. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, please cast your votes. And that would be four, with Councilmember Nigar absent, thank you very much. Okay, so, we are on to anything, Mr. City Manager for Departmental, nothing? Board and Commission Report, Zach, do you have anything left?
I do, Madam Mayor.
All right.
I have a little thunder left in me. I'll give you a couple little highlights from the past month, Jonathan has a photo. So, the last, or two weekends ago, Thirteen the Musical closed, and this was a summer camp for youth musical theater. It was the first time that, uh, we did a live pit orchestra, youth pit orchestra as well. It was...
It was quite a fantastic production that the city did. Really just wanted to give Tracy Masters a kudos for taking a shot on this musical and letting them perform. It was, uh, it was really, it was beautiful. This scene here is a, a number called "A Little More Homework," and they're signing part of the song, so it was really cool. My son, Jac, participated in this, and, and afterwards, we were talking with him as we were going to bed, and we asked him what his favorite part was. And it, it wasn't performing on the stage, it wasn't, you know, all the things you would typically think, and he said it was all the friends he made.
Oh, wow.
And it was, uh, really like, that hit me. It was like, that's the core, really, of what we do, and you make these connections in the community. So, that was a, a really good production, so I'm really proud of that. Fiddler on the Roof's coming up next, another live pit orchestra as well, so look for that. And then, Jonathan has a video for me of our Build a Boat Regatta.
I'm sorry, I missed the regatta. I was sitting on the freeway in Los Angeles. Have you ever been to this?
Mm-hmm.
It's so fun. Okay. So, the idea is to build a cardboard boat. Everybody has the same building supplies. Was it two large sheets of cardboard, duct and duct tape? Yeah, and you gotta make it float, and has to make it from one end of the CRC pool to the other. And there are three-
Two people.
With, with, yeah, two people. And, and usually, there are three boats per heat. Sometimes only two, but, so here we go. I don't think so, Zach.
No.
I don't think so. Oh, my gosh. Was that this, was that, did I see a stogie boat? I think I did. It was my design. Ideally, you would like the lightest members of your team to be in the boat, but it doesn't always work out that way. Look at that! That's great! Yeah.
By the way, those are kraken in the pool, the, the ones with big noodles.
Yes. Uh-oh. See, we see the, we see the failure here. That's very common, Zach. Was, you know, we call that the middle sinker, where you get the bend in the middle. So, what are the guys with the noodles?
Those are the kraken.
Kraken.
Okay. Did you get a trophy?
What's the fix?
Oh, my gosh, did you get a trophy? I saw your boat go down.
You could say that I, I beat the competition like they weren't even there.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
You had a major hull breach in the center of that boat.
I did. So, Dawn kicked it up a notch with the kraken this year, and then, we started a commissioners, or she started a commissioners' cup. So, the trophy here in, in front of you is a commissioners-
Well, how bad were the other commissioners? 'Cause your boat sank.
Not for sinking first. When you show up to an event, and you might be the only one at the event, you might win a trophy.
Oh, I see.
It's a, it's a legitimate participation trophy.
It was a win by default, people.
I beat them like they weren't even there.
You should be ashamed, and the chairman, too.
Chairman's prerogative, I guess.
Oh, my gosh, that's not going up in any trophy case around here.
It, so, we could scratch off commissioners and put council on there at some point. We'd love to have you come and do a council boat.
You can, but we can't.
I, I was ready. I was on the freeway. I even have my design, so I am ready for next year.
It's a great event. I'm glad Councilmember Stewart talked about it. It's one of those events that, every year for us, we try a different design, we try something new, and you see the kids try different things.
Yeah.
It's a really fun event, yeah, so.
It is really fun. So, Stu, are we in for next year?
Um, I'm in for watching.
You, I know your hair will get messed up, but I know a good barber that can take care of that.
No, I would sink the boat.
No, you wouldn't. No, you wouldn't. I'll help you. Don't tell Zach.
Well, then, surely sink the boat.
Yeah, so, it's a lot of fun. You know, Build a Boat Regatta, you have to go. If you haven't seen it, it's a lot of fun.
It's fun.
So, thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Telesio, not that Planning Commission's not fun.
Yeah, it's always fun to follow Zach and the, and the Fun Commission.
Yeah, yeah. Anything from Planning?
Yes, as a matter of fact.
All right.
We're, we're beginning to pick up our old steam again, and we had a couple of, uh, Class forty-seven and Class twenty-one liquor license upgrades that we dealt with. But the main event was really the status of the, what's touted as Temecula's first and possibly only boutique hotel to rival the Trump Towers.
Yeah.
And we reviewed several resolutions that we forwarded on to you with regard to, to that project. And just, just a little bit of information on, on the project, which is the Truax Hotel. For folks in the audience is that this is a planning application for a development plan, application for a six-story, approximately one hundred seventy-five thousand six hundred and seventy-seven square foot hotel at Mercedes Street. The hotel will contain one hundred and fifty-one guest rooms. The parking structure will also be, uh, park, parking structure will also, total appointment, commercial space, two hundred and thirteen parking spaces, that would provide valet parking for the hotel guests. It's, it's marvelous occup, uh, project, if you look at it in, in total, and you will be seeing it in total very soon. And I'll let the, let that have its effect when it gets here. But we think it's a worthy project for that location.
Yeah, Truax Hotel is spectacular, so, thank you for your work on that project. I know it's been, I know it's been a long road, so, thank you.
And with, with full cooperation, I might say, at least with the subcommittee that I serve down, with Bernie and his staff.
Yep. Thank you, John. Mr. Hagel?
Yes, we had, the Public Traffic Safety Commission had a joint meeting with the Planning Commission last week, and we took a tour of the city, spent a half-day seeing a variety of projects. It, it's amazing, all the different types of projects that are going on here, and the quality of the projects are just really outstanding. We also visited Pachanga Parkway, and, as well as the new work that's being done on, at Temecula Parkway and I-15 interchange. And that's very impressive, the speed they're going at. I'm guessing, you know, it's gonna be done on the early side, and it, you can already see there's great improvements. But the, the number of projects that are going on here is, is just amazing. You, no matter how much you seem to get out in the city, there's all these hidden gems that you never get to, get to see. So, we all really appreciate the opportunity to, to, to have that joint meeting and, and take that tour.
Oh, thank you, Bob. I hope you commissioners are all eating your Wheaties.
Yeah.
'Cause it's gonna be a busy, busy year this year and next year.
Yeah.
With so many projects. All right, so, I believe that brings us to the City Manager Report.
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Peter?
We have no reportable actions from closed session tonight.
In that case, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
And all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.